All right, welcome to the Monday, June 4th, 2018 work session of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are here with us this evening. Mr. Shields, our city manager, is out of town, out of country for this week's meeting, so we are led by the Abel, Cindy Messner, thank you very much, and our city attorney Carol McCroskey is going to be helping a great deal, I think, this evening as well. But our first order of agenda, our first order of business is the Chesapeake Bay Awareness Week proclamation, which we normally would do on a regular meeting, but given the date of the actual Awareness Week, it was really necessary to do tonight, and I think Mr. Lichtenhouse is going to do the honors, would you?
I am, I'm actually going to sub in for Mr. Zee here, who's losing his voice, but normally he'd have the honors for this, but happy to play second fiddle here. Whereas the Chesapeake Bay is the largest and at one time the most productive estuary in the United States, spanning six states in the District of Columbia, and whereas the Chesapeake Bay watershed is an extraordinary and vital natural resource, as well as an integral part of the history and heritage of the Commonwealth, and whereas the Chesapeake Bay is fed by 50 major tributaries, including the Susquehanna, Potomac, Rappahannock, York, and James Rivers, and contains more than 15 trillion gallons of water, and whereas the Chesapeake Bay stretches 200 miles from Hobbitegross, Maryland, to north of Virginia, has an average depth of 21 feet and ranges from 3.4 to 35 miles wide, it supports 348 species of finfish, 173 species of shellfish, and more than 3,600 species of plant and animal life, including 2,700 types of plants and more than 16 species of underwater grasses, and whereas the Chesapeake Bay area is home to more than 17 million people, many of whom rely upon the bay for their livelihood and recreational activities, and whereas an important source of food for the Commonwealth in the east coast of the United States, the Chesapeake Bay produces more than 500 million pounds of seafood harvest each year, and whereas the rich history, pivotal economic importance, and astounding beauty of the Chesapeake Bay watershed never cease to amaze residents and visitors alike, and whereas the city of Falls Church is divided into two local watersheds, Trips Run and Four Mile Run, both of which are important to the character and quality of life of the city, and ultimately affect the health of the Potomac River and the Chesapeake Bay.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim June 2nd through 10th, 2018, as Chesapeake Bay Awareness Week in the city of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to recognize the importance of this observance, and to participate in events, activities, and educational programs designed to increase the awareness of the importance of the Chesapeake Bay in our community. All right, I don't think there's anyone here tonight to receive this proclamation. If there is, they're certainly welcome to come forward, but it's obviously vitally important to all of us, so thank you, Mr. Zee, for your leadership on this particular issue and throughout the Commonwealth with VML, COG, and probably any other regional body there is, so thank you all very much. Let's move on to our next order of business, if we might, which is the West Falls Church Economic Development, RFDP. Ms. Messner, are you leading this discussion, or is...
I'm going to defer that one to Ms. Koskri, and I would just note for the COG proclamation for Chesapeake Bay, we'll get that to COG, so they're aware of our commitment.
Welcome.
Thank you, so I think this is an important night, actually, for the city on this, because we are going to be taking some critical actions, we're not going to take the actions, but we're going to consider some of the critical matters as we move forward. I want to first just briefly review where we are in the process. The conceptual proposals were received on May 1st, they were then posted to the city's website, and then the evaluation committee has done its work to review and study and discuss the proposals, and they met at the end of May for their discussion. We've also been working on preparing the RFDP for issuance, the request for detailed proposals, and the latest draft was posted on Granicus on Friday and sent to council at that time. After the detailed proposals do come in, which should be mid to late August, currently scheduled for August 22nd, there will be negotiations to enter into a comprehensive agreement due diligence by the selected proposer, and the beginning of zoning and land use approvals, which will involve a lot of discussion with the public about exactly what's going to be built up at the site. But tonight, we're going to do three things. First, we're going to have an overview of the conceptual proposals, then I'll give a brief presentation on what's currently in the request for detailed proposals, for council to react to, ask questions, and give input, and then at the end of the meeting, council will have a closed session to receive information on the evaluation of the conceptual proposals, and we won't act on that until next week. But first, Mr. Goldstein's going to present a brief overview of what was received through the conceptual proposals, and I think one thing that's really important to note is that this is being presented just for general information, the city staff went through proposals and got some of the public information, just to give everyone a general idea of what we have. It doesn't represent a full report on any of the proposals, and anybody who really wants to know about exactly what is in the proposals should go look on the website where they've been posted. A substantial amount of information on these proposals has been made public by the offerers, and so there's a lot that you can look at online, but what we're going to do is just give a brief overview, so everyone has some understanding of the kinds of things that have been proposed, and that will be before the council when we consider the evaluation of the proposals, so Mr. Goldstein can...
Lee Goldstein, project manager, and as Carol mentioned, I will just give a very, very brief overview of the proposals. So, we received six proposals on May the 1st. They were posted on the city's website, fallschurchva.gov. Six very highly qualified teams, and so I'm just going to, there were another number of partnerships involved with the teams, civil engineering firms, consultants, general contractors, development partnerships. I'm just going to utilize right now the name of the team that was on their front cover, but there's many more teams to list that you can dive into in the actual proposals. First, I'll start with in alphabetical order is Comstock, and Comstock proposed approximately 1.5 million square feet of development, spanning two phases, and seven to nine stories in height. I should say, all proposals had a mix of uses, just as we requested in the RFP. Comstock put forth about 200,000 square feet of office, approximately, I believe I should say 80,000 square feet of retail, a 200 key hotel, and approximately 1,000 units of residential. The next team, EYA, along with P. Hofman Regency, proposed approximately 1.4 million square feet of development across two phases, 340 square feet of office, 150 square feet of retail, 1,000, 150,000 square foot hotel, and approximately 800,000 square foot residential. The next proposer is Five Squares, offerer I should say, about 90,000 square foot total development, spanning six to 13 stories, 150,000 square feet of office, 100,000 square feet of retail, 100,000 square foot hotel, and 550,000 square feet of residential, including a portion for senior housing. Next team is, the team name is Mason Greens, but the lead developer is Republic, with a number of partners as well. 1.2 million square feet of total development, approximately seven to 13 stories, across four phases, 130,000 square feet of office, 150 key hotel, 23,000 square feet of retail, and 800 total residential units, including a senior component. Rushmark proposed approximately 1.2 million square feet of development across three phases, spanning five to 15 stories, 150,000 square feet of office, likewise with the retail, 120 key hotel, and approximately 775, 76 residential units. And the sixth proposal was from Skanska, approximately 1.1 million square feet of development across three phases, spanning six to nine stories, 117,000 square feet of retail, 170 key hotel, and approximately 860 residential units, also the senior component. The last slide just gives a, just a snapshot of the varying proposals, from gross square footage spanning 900,000 to about 1.5 million square feet, height ranging from five to seven stories on the minimum side, approximately nine to 13 stories on the maximum side, phases being from two to four phases, FAR ranging from two to three and a half across the developments, residential ranging from approximately 4 to 1,000 square feet to 1.1 million, office ranging from 130,000 square feet to approximately 340,000 square feet, and retail, a big discrepancy in retail between 20,000 square feet and 150,000 square feet, and then hotel, every component had a hotel, every offer had a hotel, ranging in size from 100,000 to 150,000 square feet, and all had some component of public green space that they are offering, civic community space that they were showcasing in their proposal. Again, very, very high level overview, but you can dive into proposals on the website, and happy to take any questions from council.
Any questions? All right. All right, why don't we move on then to the RFDP, unless anyone's got any questions? Vice Mayor Conley?
Lee, some of these have the exact units of residential, and some have it listed as 800,000 square feet of residential. Is that just how they came in the proposals?
That's, well, they'll, within the proposal, they'll actually list both typically. This just was a quick and dirty of what was on their, likely their chart or their put forth, but yeah, it's a good point that we can get that as a follow-up.
Yeah, I think some of the proposals do not have both, some of them just have a square footed, so I think what you're seeing more is a reflection of how they characterized it, and some people hadn't gone to units at that point.
Okay, thank you.
So, it depends how the box is, that's how big the box is, how they carve it up, is something that, for further discussion. Any other comments or questions at this time? Letty?
Could we get the summary up on the website, too, on the agenda?
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, anything else, should we move on to the RFDP, or the RF, what is it called? RFDP?
Yeah, so I do have a brief outline of the RFDP, we can get that up as well, because I guess we're not going to be able to see it on the board today. If anybody doesn't have a copy, let us know, and we'll make sure and get you one, because this becomes a little bit more detailed.
There are copies for the public, and the back all I work on.
You have the, this is the PowerPoint called Request for, right, because in that document, I've tried to give an outline and highlight what the changes have been since the RFP into the RFDP, so the...
Is the screen not working, our little TV screens?
It is not right now, I'm working to solve it.
Okay.
We'll get it up if I can.
Yes, but I'm going to speak just from the PowerPoint document, and then you will be able to ask questions on both documents, but I'm going to try to go through and just give an outline of what's in the RFDP and how it differs primarily from the RFP. Section one of the RFDP is the project goals and objectives, and in general, it's not substantially different from that same section in the Request for Proposals, for conceptual proposals. Our overarching goals remain the same, to create a sense of place, activate the streetscape, and to obtain the highest total value, including both upfront payments and long-term tax revenue from the property. So those are just the overarching goals, they were the same in the RFP. Subsection 1.5 has been updated, it refers now to an exclusive rights agreement, which we have a draft of and will be working on. This will be entered into when the one proposer is selected to work and negotiate with the city. It'll be a fairly simple, short agreement, it will provide for the selected developer to have access to the site, so that they can enter into due diligence, and to work, and they can work on obtaining land use approvals for the site. It will also require that the developer put a certain amount of money in escrow to guarantee that they will continue their performance. It will also commit the city and the developer to work together to negotiate the comprehensive agreement.
Let me just ask you, if I could, about the escrow. What is that securing, like typically an escrow agreement has, if you don't do this, somebody keeps the money?
Right, it will be securing their obligation, they've made certain commitments in their proposal, and should they be backing out of any of those commitments, that would be primarily their responsibility, that's when the escrow would be forfeited. But it will also have...
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add, one thing about the escrow typically is there will be a set due diligence period that they will be entering into after execution of ERA. Customarily, that money is soft and can be used to pay for certain due diligence activities, typically after the expiration of the due diligence period, the balance of that money goes hard and serves as liquidated damages. So the developer has an opportunity at the end of that due diligence period to back out, take the balance of the money, but assuming they stay in their partnership with the city, that money would become unrefunded.
So, no matter what our negotiating position, you know, typically, in a normal real estate transaction, you have a contract you've already signed, we really haven't kind of got to the final stage of what the deal is. It seems a little strange to me, like in normal real estate, you wouldn't have a hard deposit until you have a final contract.
Do you want to go?
And we understand that typically, this is not a traditional market deal.
Yeah.
The idea is to size it in an appropriate way to induce performance from both parties, but not to, you know, not to cripple anybody should they, should things not move along, so I think the idea is make it an appropriate size, make sure that it induces performance. Certainly, we have, you know, several months to go to the execution of the CA, but the amount of money we're going to request, I think, is not going to frighten anybody or turn anybody off, and it's very customary.
Okay. You can stay, Mr. Risher, you can stay. You're going to have your picture taken.
Also, in section 1.5, we have, it restates in stronger terms than were in the RFP, the city's preference for retaining fee simple ownership of the site, so that's been beefed up just a little bit. Section two concerns project requirements and desired features, and it also remains essentially the same, because the city continues to want the same overarching things from the project. A few elements did move from the desired category to the required category. That include metro-accessible Class A office space, a hotel with conference and meeting space, a walkable retail environment, and sustainable landscape designs that integrate open space with a canopy cover. So those elements have been moved to be somewhat more important. Section three, did you have a question?
I just have a question on 2.1. It says, 2.1A, says execute a CA with the city prior to the commencement of construction of the new high school. I'm wondering if we want to say more firmly, execute a CA by May 2019, because we want to make sure that that high school is ready to break ground in June 2019, and we're not going to be able to go forward unless we have the comprehensive agreement signed.
I think that there already are milestones in here that will call for that date to be the date, if they're not changed, but I think we can look at whether maybe putting the date right there would work, because those things, if dates slip for some reason, we would, they would all need to slip. So if we put the May date in there, for now, we could.
Okay, I think that's just, it's important for us to be able to say that this is, this date is important to us.
And I think we have milestones on the project, which I think call for the construction to begin in May.
I like the language in there as it is, that ties this already with the site without putting a date, just because I think there's a lot that could happen between now and a year from now. I think we just, I don't want to artificially say we need to do something if we're just not ready. So I think it's, the language seems appropriate to me that we're tying the two together already, but we can get council's advice on that.
Yeah, and we do have, we have a list of the milestones on page four, one of which is the comprehensive agreement, and the May 2019 date is set forth there. So it is indicated in some locations, and I think one of the things about 2.1 was trying to show the relationship of the two events should be at the same, but we will certainly consider whether we can also put the date in the other location.
I mean, if you do, you may want to say something like currently estimated to be whatever, and just make it crystal clear that that's...
Section three of the RFDP is the procurement information. It has generally been updated to refer to the current phase, although in reviewing for today, I did notice there are some places that need to be cleaned up with that updating, but it in general remains the same. We have updated the date for submittal of the detailed proposals to be August 22nd. That's a little bit more time for proposers than was originally included in the schedule, but it shouldn't change anything in the long run, because it won't change the October 1st date for decision-making. Section four of the RFDP is submission requirements. First is an executive summary, which was similarly, an executive summary was required in the conceptual proposals. They were posted, all the public parts of them were posted online, that will not be the case for detailed proposals. However, we have directed in this section that the executive summary will be available to the public, and we've also asked that it would include the vision for the site, and the uses, and the locations of the uses, and some of the benefits of their vision that will, excuse me, some of the benefits that the city will be able to realize from that vision. So we've directed some of the content there, because that's the one thing we're going to ask will definitely be published. We're also asking for a detailed development plan in that section, and some development processes and methods such as timeline and milestones for the ERA period, that is, from when we sign the ERA up to signing the comprehensive agreement, as well as a description of sustainable building practices that they intend to use. We also ask for an operating plan and some of the longer-term things, such as management of private streets, so it goes into overall more detail on the plan. And the real place that the submission requirements are substantially beefed up is in the financial information. There is a much more detailed plan requested, and if you look at the RFDP, you can see that there are a number of tables that we've asked proposers to fill out, which can be, will be used to evaluate their offer, and how any negotiations that change their proposal might affect that offer. So there's a number of values that they're asking, we're asking them to give us, that will enable us to determine if we reduce residential or increase residential, what the changes would be, and we want a commitment to those amounts. And that's one of those areas where if you have further questions on that, I'm going to look at Mr. Risher again. Then, section five, I'm sorry, does somebody have a question? Okay, so section five is the evaluation process and criteria. It's again a very brief section. The criteria are stated generally in three categories, the value to the city, development program, the project execution, and risk. Section six is our usual statement that we encourage participation by small, women-owned and minority-owned businesses. Section seven is our reservations of rights. Section eight is just miscellaneous statements. So what is next? The RFDP is going to be brought back to you for approval at the June 11th meeting. At that time, council can review any final changes and authorize its issuance to the three entities that are ultimately down-selected from the six that we have tonight. And we would issue it to those selected proposers only within a few days after June 11th. And then we would be expecting, as I had noted, the detailed proposals to come in on August 22nd. And so if there are questions, or comments, or suggestions that you'd like to give us, we're happy to take them.
All right. Questions, comments, suggestions, Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you. Just a general request, given that we're reviewing multiple versions of this, could we look at red lines in the future, just so I think it's easier for us to look at kind of what's dramatically changed from copy to copy, it just helps me to not have to read through it all over.
We've had, we had lots of red lines, and so we ended up giving you a clean copy, but we will do that.
Okay. Second, on the section from desired to required, I know Wyatt, before he was out, spent a lot of time with the EDA, and we received a letter from the ESC with some input as well.
Yes.
My sense is that it does incorporate some of the feedback from the EDA, since I was there for part of the discussion, and reading the letter from the ESC, it sounds like they probably would like stronger language around kind of resilient and environmentally sustainable development move from desired to required. Has there been staff discussion on that?
I don't know that we've had discussion, if someone else is aware that we have, I don't think there has been discussion, but I think that's simply because that came in a few days ago, or I saw it first time a couple days ago, and so it simply hasn't been incorporated. I'm not, I would wonder if it was something like resilience, and I understand that to be an aspiration and a goal, but I'm not sure how that becomes a require, how do you measure a requirement for resilience without more of a firm standard, I would wonder. But I think it's certainly, we recognize that that's an important goal for the city to reach, but if we tried to move it to required, I'm not sure what it would, how we would check off the box of whether they had met that requirement.
And they had better language than I'm using on kind of what they would recommend, but I would just want staff to take a look at that. We will.
And Ms. Hardy, if I could add, there's, we have had some focus on like the EDA early on comments and the key goal of this program and effort, which is clearly on place-making and financial sustainability, so for this process, we've really focused on those key goals that council outlined. Then we'll have during the future negotiations, some ability to see what the proposals offer and negotiate from there. Also, we still have land use and other efforts that will, with the ESC, probably accomplish some of these things that are tied to that. So there are some things here, specifically because the EDAs came in early enough, that we looked at and weighed the pros and cons, and deferred to some market-driven benefits. The ESC, HSEC, and Housing Corporation, Housing Commission that just came in are under staff review, we received them. I don't think there's inconsistencies with the core environmental or affordable housing, but they may not be as far-reaching as your boards and commissions would like, and so those will have to be deliberated as you balance out all your priorities.
That was going to be my next question, because I know we also got letters from the Housing Commission, HSEC, about upping our affordable housing requirements, and so I don't know whether there's been staff discussion, but I think it'd be nice to at least get a response back on, hey, we did deliberate, and here's what we were thinking, or, you know, what the input might be, just so they don't feel like their input was thrown over our fence.
We have received and reviewed them, and we could follow up with a response.
Yeah, terrific.
Yeah.
Last thought.
By the way, we do have, if need be, the chair of the ESC and other groups here tonight, so just FYI, I don't want to interrupt, but go ahead.
Great. So on that note about kind of how to figure out what should be in desired versus required, as, given the timeframe that we have to finalize the RFDP and then announce and make a decision on the shortlist, it's really going to happen all at next Monday's meeting, I wonder whether there are features from the shortlisted responses that we're going to have, that we all may decide should actually be required. So as we kind of debate tonight, you know, likely in closed session, what we like about the six responses and which one should be in the shortlist, are there things in those three, or, you know, however many proposals we decide to shortlist, that could actually be required features? And should we think about the timing of issuance of the RFDP slightly, maybe a few days after we decide and announce it? So... we decide to announce it, so that it allows for time, say, hey, these are, you know, this is a common feature, for example, in the three that we shortlist? We should make that a required feature, so that the RFDP can take into account who the three shortlisted respondents are? Does that make sense?
Yes, and I think already some, some of the changes have reflected what has been seen in all the proposals. And I, I think the expectation is that we would issue by Friday, the 15th, so there are several days after the, after your Monday night action on the 11th, when there could be updates made.
Okay. Yeah, I'd recommend just a few days, and if staff can give us a recommendation, given that you all likely have spent more time on the six proposals, on what you might see as common threads throughout, that we might want to consider as additional requirements. Thank you.
Other comments? I have to leave, I thought people have comments.
Yeah, I do. Okay. So first, I'll say I was pleased with the respondents, and the quality of the breadth of the bench of respondents that received, but I've been a little disappointed in reading this RFDP in terms of its evolution from the conceptual front. I mean, going back to Mrs. Hardy's comment about incorporating some of the things that we've seen, that we like in those conceptual proposals, I feel like really the only changes that have been included in this RFDP really just kind of mimic what we've seen. So the, the nod towards metro-accessible Class A office space, the hotel with conference space, you look at the walkable retail environment, some of the, what I think is a little bit loose language around sustainability and resiliency, that really just kind of mimics, I think, a lot of what we've seen in the proposals, and I was hoping to see something that, not too over, overly prescriptive, but, but certainly, I think, give a bit of a nod towards some of the things that we've been talking about that are important. I know affordability has been incredibly important, and we just covered that topic. One of the issues that I know that I've had discussions with, with Mr. Z and the folks from the ESC here, recently is related to the sustainability and resiliency of this site. And two things in particular that I think speak to the core, and I know that there's a lot of debate in the development industry about the value of building green and what that means, but, but two things for this site in particular that I would like to see fleshed out in more detail for this RFDP, so these respondents know how important it is, is one, is to focus on stormwater management. For me, it's unconscionable to think that we wouldn't put a tremendous amount of focus on that, and I know that these things unpack and evolve, but we are going to, I mean, we're investing, we have roughly $170 million worth of capital improvements that the city owns adjacent to a commercial structure, that's essentially going to be taking over what was pervious land and making it impervious by putting a lot of concrete on, I don't want to end up in an elicit city situation, which has flooded twice because of overdevelopment despite repeated calls to make sure that they dealt with stormwater management. So I think that there needs to be some language in there about a focus, and I know that there will be stormwater management plans, and there was a bit of detail in some of the proposals about how they would deal with that, and the certifications that they would receive, but I want to strengthen up that language, and I don't have recommended language at this point, but I think it needs to be more pronounced and included in the requirements. And to that end, a comment related to sustainability and resiliency, which, which really plays towards a number of things. One, we're going to deliver a commercial site next to a school that we have folks committing to build to net zero. We know that it's important as a community, we know that it's important from a commercial real estate perspective and a viability perspective, and I think that that needs to be mirrored, and the commercial piece as well. Lead ND is great, lead gold is great, but I think that we can, I think we can dig a little bit deeper on this, and I think that we can put some more language in there. And one of the things that was provided by the ESC in the documentation that they provided, which I'm sure staff will, will take the time to review, was a focus on energy usage intensity, which is a measure of essentially reducing energy consumption on that site. And I think that there should be some language in section 2.4 specific to section G, trailing off the end of that sentence, that talks about with a specific focus on the lowest EUI achievable, complementing the adjacent net zero-ready school site. And I know that doesn't force anybody's hand, but I think that it does make it, I think it does make it much more pronounced in terms of what the city wants. And there's twofold, and I think people need to understand this, because you could talk about the altruistic reasons that a developer would build green, and we know that it's important, you can talk about it in the context of man-made climate change, you can talk about it in the context of utilizing renewable energy, of sending the right message to our kids, but at the crux of this, one of the important things that we set out on this journey was to develop tax revenue for the city, to generate tax revenue for the city. Lowering energy consumption across the board on a commercial site like this is going to lower the operating expenses of these buildings, which is going to increase to net operating income, which, all things being equal, you apply a capitalization rate to that in the assessor's office, and we get a higher assessment. So asking a developer, even though they may complain that it's a little more costly, and it is very conceivable, that it impacts the overall value that they bring to the site initially, but generating a higher net operating income across the board by reducing energy consumption on this building is going to lead to higher assessments on the real estate front in perpetuity. It just makes sense to do that. So I would recommend putting some language in there about trying to achieve that, that lower energy usage intensity as low as possible. And I know that these things evolve, and again, they will continue to unpack as this moves, but I think that that's an important component that checks the box on a lot of different fronts, so I'd like to see that language included in 2.4 and section G. And I would welcome comments from, from you guys, Ted, in terms of responses to that or, or concerns with that.
I think it's completely appropriate for the city council to make comments on the types of requirements they want to see in the RFDP, to put more specific requirements in there for bidders to follow, and to eliminate any confusion there might be with what the city council considers important in these offers. So we're willing to work with you over the next two weeks to make sure that that language is included to your satisfaction.
Great. And I would say that it was useful from the ESC, there was, correct me if I'm wrong here, the document that was sent over by this company, Seventh Wave, it was, I think, overly prescriptive, all well-meaning, but in terms of a reference point and definition of what that means, that could also be included similar to the way that we have a hyperlink here for our streetscape standards, just so folks know what it is that we're trying to achieve. Some of that'll need to be edited out, because it was a recommendation for specific RFDP language, which was about three pages long, and that's, that's a bit overly prescriptive. But just generally speaking, I want to reduce utility and energy consumption on this site as much as possible, so we can generate as high of a net operating income going forward as absolutely possible in this, so it pays dividends for us from a, from a valuation perspective. That's all I've got right now.
Great. I also see Bob Wolf is in the audience, he's also a consultant of the city. I would love to have you sit at the table, if you'd like to join us and offer your thoughts on the discussion. Other comments, questions about the RFDP? I have a few, but do you have, someone have, Mr. Z?
Why do I really want to, first of all, thank Mr. Littenhouse for his very articulate expression of the key principles, I think they're important, personally, also to me, but to many of the people in the city. What we build on that hill is, and it is the top of a hill, and I'm quite frankly, a little bit surprised that no of the proposers, maybe they haven't revealed it yet, is taking advantage of the topography, and things like radio frequency and things like that. I'm sure that some people are thinking about that, and so that suggests that there is a way of incorporating sustainable power, so that the right kind of industries that would take advantage of the topography would also want to have 24/7 reliable power. Having said that, this development's going to represent 20% of the net value of the city going forward, and maybe to some other place, it may not be a big deal, but for us, it is a big deal. This is the last biggest piece here, and as the ESC letter says, we don't want to be the last one to build, the last brown building in this area. So I think it's important that we, as others have said, and I've copied that expression, that, you know, you want to be forward-looking, you want to be positioned in the future, and that you just don't want to have even the whiff of obsolescence hanging around the building when you open that door. I think in terms of marketing, it pays off in spades productivity, that as well. But you know, the, the financial discussion that Mr. Littenhouse entered into, the, you achieve savings of 10% on operating expenses in the area of energy, but, but also reduction in insurance costs, initial systems costs, because then you get to bundle your security and other kinds of things, systems together. These are just smart things to do, they don't necessarily have to do with building green, but does position this development into the future. So I don't know whether Mayor, you would want to invite any additional comments from, from the ESC to clarify the letter they presented us or not.
I'm happy to hear from ESC if people want to, I don't know if the group has any feelings one way or the other. Okay. All right, sure. Come on up briefly, and maybe you can clarify or explain your position just a bit.
Thank you for inviting me up here. I, I think Ross made a very powerful case for our point, so thank you very much, Mr. Littenhouse, I'm sorry. You know, I think that the key points we wanted to get across in our letter are, I guess, a couple of things to say. One, I think there are three key issues for this site, stormwater, the greenhouse gas emissions and energy use of these buildings, and preparing for the physical impacts of climate change that are, you know, we expect to see. And I think the key issues for this site will be increased heat and increased precipitation and severe weather. I think we're already seeing some of the impacts of that. So, and I think the key point is to just make clear that, you know, as, as Mr. Littenhouse said, we might hear that some of these asks might increase the upfront cost, but there's really a long-term value to the developers and to the city, that I think, a lot of research shows that we'll, we'll see from this. I think the, the key point behind the Seventh Wave documentation is performance-based procurement. We heard from panelists in our October 2017 schools panel, and the most recent panel on stormwater and energy infrastructure, that lead is great, lead is nice, that's a way to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, but if you really want to see a highly efficient building, you need to include energy usage intensity targets. And with the document that we got from Seventh Wave, on a pro bono basis, they're a consultant, but they, they're, excuse me, a nonprofit, they offer consulting services, they did this for us in about 24 hours, on a pro bono basis, which was kind, I think that's why it was three pages. They gave us some targets that we can consider, and they differentiate the energy usage intensity targets for multifamily versus hotel versus office, which I think is helpful and worth taking a look at. But the key point there, and that they, you know, our panelists have told us before, is set your goals, all things being equal, pick the highest performing proposal, and explicitly ask the proposers to, you know, to think about the energy usage intensity. So if a proposer can't give you a 40 EUI office building, but they've at least done the energy modeling and thought about it, and they come back to you and say, well, I think 42 is doable, here's why, then we can work with that. It's just asking them to, to do the heavy lifting and think about the energy usage of these projects upfront. One last point on climate resilience, same as McCasrey, I think, you know, rightly said, you know, there's a question of how can we tell if the proposers are meeting a standard? And resiliency is tough, because there, there's some emerging standards, but there's no current equivalent to lead in the climate resiliency space. What we'd like is to ask in the narrative, that proposers, at a minimum, tell us how this site will be prepared for increased heat, increased precipitation, increased severe weather. What we'd like to see, and what we included in the desired features of our submission, was that, is that proposers use the New York City Climate Resiliency Design Guidelines. Version two of that was just released in April of this year. It was road-tested by Dewberry, which is in one of the proposal groups, so people in our space, you know, know about this. And it's not prescriptive, it's flexible, but it has a section on urban heat, it has a section, excuse me, a section on increasing heat, a section on increasing precipitation, and offers strategies that proposers can think about. And I think applying those guidelines to this case will help us better understand how proposers are specifically setting us up for this, to be a successful valuable proposal for, or project for 50 years, and not for three.
Great. Thank you so much for your participation in this process, and for coming out this evening. You had one last point.
Yeah, Corey, thank you very much, appreciate that. In section 4.5, there was a request during the financial plan for a fully functional operating pro forma in Excel. One of the things that I would like to see as, as we go through this, I'd like to see the anticipated rents, the market rents that they provide, but I want to ask if that's something that most developers are going to, going to provide to us. I would hope that that's the case. I am always suspect of fiscal impacts and what people think they'll be able to achieve in the market, and like to vet that myself, and amongst discussion here with, with folks on council, so I'd like to see what the inputs are, not just line out of income coming through on a, on a pro forma, but, but the actual breakdown of what goes into the income and the expenses.
Yeah, I think part of that model is going to have to be a fully, complete DCF that starts with potential gross income at the top, and applies market amounts of vacancy and bad debt, and comes up with an effective number. So it's our intent to receive information that is completely transparent, that we can either extrapolate the, the types of market data you're talking about, maybe per net rentable square foot.
Like rent per square foot for the multifamily by unit type, how much you think you're going to get rent per square foot for office, is it full service, is it triple net? I mean, all of those, kind of look at it to give it the sniff test to see, because folks will come in strong and say, I can get $60 a square foot.
Right. No, on the retail side, we'll request triple net rates to make sure that we can benchmark them appropriately. On the multifamily side, we'll request rents per net rentable gross and per unit. On the hotel keys, we'll request, you know, the ADRs plus the vacancies to establish RevPARs. We'll, we'll provide all, we'll make sure we have all that detail, and if we don't get it in the form we requested, we'll make sure we get it in after action with each proposer.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Okay, I've got a few. One, I think it'd be good, I'd like to know what the proposed unit mix is, not just, you know, 300,000 square feet.
I agree.
300,000 square feet X is totally different from 300,000 square feet A Y, and so I guess it would be good to both have, I think, the unit mix and the total residential GFA as part of the request. Also, I think it'd be good to have something about phasing, and try to get commitments about, how do you propose phasing non-residential uses? So that we can get a commitment through this of what they intend, you know, what they're willing to, to give us at certain point, because I think we all know they probably would like to do the residential now, and the non-residential never, probably, or forever. So I think we have to flush that out or suss that out, and I think it'd be better to do that sooner as opposed to later. So I think some kind of question about, you know, how do you propose phasing, non-residential phasing, what would you be willing to do as far as up-fronting some of this? Just to suss it out, I don't know what the exact language would be, but something along those lines. There is a mention of a hotel commitment about conference space, although I think it would be good to suss that out a little bit more as well, and I don't recall the exact language, but maybe requesting the approximate square footage of the conference space, which I think can be important. I mean, you can have a residence in with, you know, 2,000 square feet of conference room on the ground floor, or you can have something more substantive, and I think that is probably important to some of us, is what size conference space they propose. I think it would also be helpful, and I mentioned this at our last meeting, to have a statement, we have the breakdown chart that shows, hey, what are you going to pay us per GFA? But the narrative didn't seem to totally hit the point I was getting at, is to make it crystal clear to developers that the GFA may move from one use to the other, and we're going to kind of look to the number you give us to hold your feet to that fire. And so a statement, I'm not sure exactly what it'd say, but essentially that, you know, the total GFA and the GFA of the particular uses may change subject to negotiation, and we're looking for your number.
You want to create a matrix so that we can have these programmatic discussions and understand the immediate impact of the value to the city.
Well, you have the matrix there, but I just want to make sure the developers understand that
Right.
the numbers may change, so that it's not just like, oh, well, you're just giving me, hey, I'm proposing X millions of dollars, and I'll break it out this way, it really doesn't matter. I want them to understand that, yeah, it does matter, because maybe that part's going to shrink, and that part's going to get bigger through negotiation, and I don't want to retrade
Right.
the price for something, because it got a little bit bigger, it got a little bit smaller. And so I, I think it'd be good to have something in here, like a narrative that just says, you know, hey, the, the numbers you provided may change, and you want, we want to hold your feet to the fire, to the numbers, the GFA per square foot number.
Much like in the presentation, Mr. Mayor, we, in creating those forms, we want to create that standard format that will iterate the value across the different product types through different metrics, such as GFA or net rentable or per key. So we'll be able to establish those baselines and make sure that they remain solid through our discussion periods with the selected respondents.
I sure totally get my point, like, I think you have the matrix already here. I was looking for a statement that just says to developers, hey, these numbers may change, we don't want your per-unit price to change, we want, we were just, I'm giving you fair warning, that we may want your retail number to go high. to go higher. We may want your residential number to go lower, but we want a number that we can play around with and still come out with a number at the end of the day that's going to be pretty doggone close to what we anticipate.
Understood.
Also, let me ask you, and I asked this at the last meeting, you may not have been here. You have a number for parking. I mean, do you expect anybody to be paying for parking? It seems like a liability, not an asset, in terms of the matrix for the number for parking.
I think we have that in as a general item in, at this time, and, but the expectation is that that's one of those things that's going to get moved around a bit as we go through land use approvals and things like that.
But I mean, to me, it's almost, like, let's say you put a number here, nobody's paying for parking, right? It's a liability, and so in some ways, I think it distorts your other numbers, because if someone comes up with a number of $50 million, and they have a number in here that paying $5 million for parking, they're really not. And so if we played, moved something here or there, it would distort the other numbers. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? Like, the total number is based not on parking, you can pull parking out, and the total number is based on all the other factors added up, not the parking number. And by putting, ascribing a value to parking, it's an artificial thing, right?
But there's a value for parking, yeah. We did not assume any revenue from parking operations in the initial underwriting that we conducted last summer. So to assign a value to parking may be distorting, so we'll look at that and we'll make sure that we're addressing it properly.
I mean, in some ways, I think just taking the line out and not having it in here because somebody's going to ascribe value to it, they probably should ascribe a liability to it. But anyway, that sort of occurred to me in looking at this. Also on line, let's see, I think it's Section 1.5. We say something like, we shall enter into a whatever. I think it'd be better to say something like, the city intends to, but we don't have to, right? If we don't get a bid we want, we don't have to enter into agreement with that person.
That's, that's correct. So we can, we can, I understand your point. We can look at that.
Yeah, I can't remember what number it is. I think it's 1.5.
1.5, it's the exclusive rights agreement is in that part, yeah.
Yeah. Are there other comments from folks? Okay. Ms. Hardy hasn't, or Ms., okay. Ms. Hardy then, again.
So one thing that's probably worth clarifying, again, I think for both council and the public, I think, is, so in the RFDP, there's, you know, all these new tables that we're asking for commitments on the financials, which I think largely is tied to, obviously, the development program. When the developers, the shortlisted developers submit this on August 22nd, are they also committing to the development program as it, as proposed, like what we look at in the CDP? Or does that commitment not come until the ERA and even the comprehensive agreement stage?
Well, I think that the actual, the development program is going to be somewhat continue to be under, they're expected to give a more detailed plan for the development, but as we move through the negotiation of the comprehensive agreement and land use approvals, those things might get adjusted. And I think that's one of the reasons in the financial information, there are some of these numbers that are going to enable us as things get sorted out. There may be some negotiation as to the exact thing. So I think what we are looking for at this point is a more detailed development plan. However, we have a ways to go on the development plan. We're going to come in, we're going to be working on special exceptions, and as we know, as you work through that process, there will be a certain amount of adjustment. So the development plan, we expect that there's a commitment to uses and quantities of uses, but there may be some negotiation over time.
And I think this is what, you know, the point of the tables that the mayor's advocating to do is to guard against the risk that, you know, they're committing to a certain financial amount, but they say, well, actually, I can give you a different mix and still give you the same money, but the mix of uses may not be what, you know, we told you when they submitted the three responses, right?
Yes, and when the uses, the type of uses get adjusted, we have an amount for the per square foot of each use and know that one is much more valuable than the other. And so that's why we're looking for those financial commitments now.
So do we think that the information we're requesting essentially mitigates that concern we have?
It helps us bulwark ourselves against retrading by setting the unit price so that if we were to consider a change in the proposed program, we could understand the economic impacts and we could, we could evaluate them properly.
Well, it does make it transparent to us. It doesn't necessarily say you can't trade it for something different. It just means that we know the math you're using to make that trade, right?
The expectation, and it will be very clear, is that the selective respondent's proposed program is what we're going to base our negotiations off of. But we will require that additional information to make sure that we understand the ramifications of programmatic change.
So I have the stuff tail to kind of my last point, sorry. The balancing kind of the public input part of it, so how does the public kind of know when they, you know, when we get to the shortlisted, the shortlisted proposals due at the end of August, what they submit is, you know, largely what we think, you know, it'll end up being, but there could be some things that change depending on the market or depending on the negotiations through the ERA and the comprehensive agreement. But how, between us deciding in October, I think, right, is the date, early October, when we decide between the shortlisted to narrow down to one to May, when the comprehensive agreement is, that's the public part of the process that people can expect to be able to chime in that says, gosh, I like eight stories versus five stories, or I like this use of mixes? Like, is that the timeframe when people can expect to actually be able to engage in that more detailed discussion?
There will be a special exception process during that time. So yes, that's when there will be more ability to come in and make adjustments to the proposals. I think it's also important, though, right now for folks to look at the RFDP language, because if there are things that we want to get included in there, you know, as we've seen some today, we definitely want to try to get that in there now so that we can ask proposers to include the things that we really, the city really knows it wants.
I think there's just a expectation setting with the public on kind of, at this phase, obviously, provide input on RFDP, but when we get the responses back at the end of August, we largely think the development program could look like this, but things really won't be final until you go through that formal land use process that people are familiar with until May 2019.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
I have a few questions on Section 2.4. Letter C, we're still including demolition of the existing high school? Is that still double counted where it's also in the school RFDP?
I believe so, yeah.
And we're going to leave that in there for both?
I think we'll have to take a hard look at that again, but I think that, and I, there hasn't been any discussion on that recently, so I'm not aware of whether, but I think that I'll have to, I'll have to look back into that.
I just think, is it time to look at that again? When we first put them in with the initial RFP for both, we said, well, we'll just see how it all plays out. But I'd hate to double count it at this point, if it doesn't need to be. Letter I, the affordable housing, and we got a letter from Human Services Advisory Committee as well as the Affordable Housing Policy Work Group that I'm the council liaison to. And that letter had a good number of requests in it, sort of a laundry list of all the things that the Affordable Housing Policy Work Group is considering. And I see that what's in here is keeping it to a minimum of 6% residential at 60% of AMI, and then it says to be affordable for the length of the comprehensive agreement. Is that in perpetuity, the length of the comprehensive agreement?
Yes, because that would be, well, it would be the length of the land lease, that's correct.
Length of the grant.
Essentially, essentially, for the length of the project.
For your non-perpetuaries. It'd be longer than perpetuity.
Longer than perpetuity.
Perpetuity plus 50 years for me.
For your grandchildren and mine, right. All right. So that's a significant change from what had previously been in other agreements or things that, species that we've negotiated.
In prior projects, yes. I think recently we've had a couple that have been life of the project, but, but only very recently.
Okay. And then Letter J says, we want a plan to operate and maintain infrastructure, including private roads and sidewalks. Are we assuming that all of the internal roads in this project are going to be private?
That has been the assumption, yes, and that they will, they will be built by them and operated by them and maintained by the property owner or whatever entity it is.
Probably not operated by, I mean, in a sense, we'll regulate. The roads will be regulated by the city and we'll have.
The police will still have access to those roads for?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
But as far as cleaning the roads, will they be city roads or private roads?
I think that's a, we would make, they would be private for that purpose. The city would simply be able to regulate the traffic so that all the roads get regulated in the same manner.
Okay. Do we have any other developments like that in Falls Church that have private roads? I think, like, Winter Hill condos, the parking lots are private.
Yeah, you have parking lots in some residential, plus in terms of a large commercial, I don't believe we have anything to that extent. You know, your shopping centers are responsible for the parking lots and so forth, but not with private roads, as this clearly will have in the internal structure.
And I know similarly in Arlington, we almost never had private streets, and then Market Common was really sort of the first development where that loop exists, and that, that was a private street. And so, and that was designed so that they could, they built it out with some special finishes and things like that, so that's, it was left as a private street. But the city did the traffic regula, I mean, the city, it was a county doing the traffic regulation there on that street.
Okay. And Mr. Duncan just mentioned the spectrum has a private road.
Oh, that's correct. Mason Drive or something that was to go through.
The loop in the center would be private.
I mean, you can subject it to an easement, so that would make it essentially public. It's just the fee, the ground is not owned by the city, which makes it easier to put underground parking, for example, and also easier to fudge on, off some of the maintenance obligations onto a private developer. But it's not an incredibly uncommon concept. I wouldn't say it's really private road, it's just the fee is owned by the developer. We take it in easement as opposed to taking it in fee. If that makes any sense.
Can I jump in here?
Yes.
I think the developers will want it private for one reason, so they can program it. They want to be able to close it whenever they want, and they don't want to have to go to the city and get a 60-day permit that never comes. So, and programming is very important in a mixed-use project like this, so that, it's a control issue for the developer.
So then that, the private road then, if we think about the 10 acres, is the developable 10 acres, that road counts towards those 10 acres of private development?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. But I think that, and I think Mr. Wolf makes a very good point, because the proposals often have, you know, it's like this walkable retail area, there's, there's these streets that can be closed for public events and things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Just one question, I think, and I hope this is not too far down the road, but since Ms. Hardy referred to the public's role in the process, so in order to help the public gain an understanding and hopefully gain an attitude of support for the project, the shorthand that we usually hear when doing a development project is, you know, what percentage commercial and what percentage residential is it? Looks like from the proposals that are presented here tonight, the market wants to build somewhere between 776 and 1,000 housing units on this site. But not all housing units are equal, and if, assuming that the respondents, you know, present us with information that's very granular about the kind of units and the type of units, senior units, whatever, I'm asking, is, is the process that we're going through here now, is there anything in the RFDP process that can help us be more sophisticated in our assessment of the residential product and communicate that to the community so that we gain some appreciation for how, you know, senior housing is different from market-rate housing and how studios are different from, aimed at millennials are different from three bedrooms aimed at baby boomer, empty nesters? Is there anything that we're doing that's going to advance that dialogue, or are we basically just going to need to wait until we get to August 22nd and then begin to have that dialogue?
I think there's two ways to address that, sir. One would be for the city to delineate its, its desired housing program, or to suggest what types of units it would like to see in the responses. The other way to evaluate the responses would be to come up with a matrix that, you know, elicits the kind of information Mr. Littgenhouse alluded to earlier, which is, you know, to break it down very granularly and specifically by unit type, square footages, the types of rents we, the respondents are relying on to underwrite their, their offer to the I agree there, we have to get as much information as possible to make qualitative comparisons between the eventual proposers to decide which housing program falls in line best with the city's goals for the project.
That sounds like some version of, you know, we'll need to wait until August and see what we're provided with unless there's a will in the council between now and, you know, June the 11th to prescribe the kind of housing mix that we want to see. And I'm, I'm not calling for that, but I'm, I mean, Mr. Snyder's not here, he often is the person who brings up the point of, why does it have to be so residential? And I'm trying to get at that and yet also get, get some progress, get going forward with what the market wants to build here and have a conversation with the market about housing types before, you know, the RFDP goes out. It's an opportunity to have that conversation and to communicate to the market if we use it.
Agreed.
So I'm going to make one point one more time that sounds extraneous, it may be, but it may sound a little off the wall, but I do think we should keep in the back of our minds, if an Amazon or an Apple were to come to Northern Virginia, that the value of this land may change and the uses of this land may want to change as well. So maybe not a big deal, maybe not a big amount, but I think it would, maybe needs some adjustment or some consideration. So just the back of our minds, who knows what can happen, but if something were to happen a couple metro stops away, I think it would have some impact on this land and what its value and what its uses might be. So I have no inside knowledge about anything, but I'm just saying that I think Northern Virginia's a great place for either company to be. Is there any other comments people want to make? Do either one of you all, Mr. Risher or Mr. Wolf, have anything else you want to add?
Just one point of clarification on an earlier point, because I want it on the record. There is a value that the city conveys to the successful respondent in allowing exclusive access to the site and the ability to negotiate unmolested from other parties during this exclusive rights period. And so it's always been our opinion, counseling our public clients, that they need to extract that value through this reasonable ERA deposit. So I wanted to just mention that for consideration of the council, because as you said, Mr. Mayor, you are taking the property off the market and you are dedicating it to a certain respondent given their performance on certain metrics, and if they perform and another opportunity comes along, they've paid for that exclusive access. So that, that's the other reason for the ERA deposit, is to essentially pay for making the property illiquid in the market.
I mean, not to belabor the point, I, just it's sort of counterintuitive to me, my own experience in the marketplace, to have someone put money, hard money down before they've struck a final deal. And so I guess I would just rely on your insight as to whether that's market feasible, if it is, and so be it.
We've done it several times for other public clients, so, you know, the key is to strike the right balance between, we don't want to be punitive in the amount, but we want to make it, you know, we want to get their skin in the game.
Gotcha. Is there anything you want to add, Mr. Wolf, to our discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. This has been talked about by Ross and others, and whatever you want with regard to resilience and stormwater and all the, all the rest is fine. That's a public policy decision, and you should ask for whatever you want. From the private side, unless you want the development community to roll their eyes, which is not a good reaction, and will result in, in less than precise bids, you should be as precise as possible about how you're going to judge those, those criteria. And it's been said, but I just want to emphasize how important that is. To use the word resilience and say you want a resilient plan means nothing, and it will just get a nothing response. So it, where you can be specific, be specific, and then you'll get, you'll get an appropriate response.
Okay. Do you have other comments about what we've heard tonight?
I think, I think it's been an intelligent discussion. I think you guys know what you want. You just got to get it down on the RFDP and then see what comes back. you want. You just got to get it down on the RFDP and, and then see what comes back.
All right. Sounds good. Well, so I would suggest we make a change in our agenda so that we don't go into closed session and come back out, which is to move item four before item three. And so we don't have people coming back and forth. And item four is a Founder's Row update on the fiscal analysis. And so with everyone's approval, I would suggest we make that change and go ahead and hear from Mr., Mr. Smart and, and hear from the folks about this tonight. So.
So what we'll have is Mr. Fuller and Mr. Smart now join us at the table.
All right. You have, rest of you all stick around, or at least some of you stick around. We'll have our closed session coming up here shortly. So welcome to you both. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for the work you've done to get us here. We appreciate.
We'll start with a presentation by Mr. Fuller on the staff report and the fiscal impact with Mr. Smart adding in.
Oh, there we go. I'm sorry. The green light, I thought was on. So the, just to restate, the council, back on May 21st on their work session indicated they were interested in, I'm sorry, on June 4th, was interested in a financial briefing on the Mason Row project prior to any consideration on June 11th of referral aboard and commissions, or a formal review of the Mason Row amendment. And so what we've done is we've taken the information that was in the last staff report, which is pretty much the same and carried it forward and put it in this table here, that indicates the original special exception with the hotel and the fiscal impact range that was developed at that time, which was about 1.3 million to 2 million range. And then, secondly, we did an apples-to-apples. And what that is, is we then take the hotel out, we put in the age restricted, and we rerun the model as if we were running it on the same basis as the original run. So the original run back in 2015, 2016, all the same inputs are in there. All we've done is, we've swapped out the hotel for the age restricted and put a value in for the age restricted. And so once we do that run, which we're calling the apples-to-apples, you get a, a 1 million to 1.5 million range. And the reduction is then available in terms of, from the original approval of the special exception and running the age restricted, it shows about a 285,000 to 496,000 reduction in income in terms of the range of income that was projected. Then, thirdly, in the table, we do the current, based on the amended special exception application that's before you. And the model's been updated in a variety of ways. And then, since the original run, for various reasons which are indicated in this report, those assumptions and those changes. And that's, that's routine in the modeling. It's just, you know, a couple years have passed. And so when we add the age restricted in and run that as of, you know, last month, we get a 818,000 to 1.7 range. And that's a reduction of about 310,000 to 480,000. And if you
Gary.
Just sort of look at the general.
Gary, can I ask you to stop there?
Yeah.
So I think I understand the three different model runs.
Okay.
Is the difference, is the reason why the spread in the latest run so much wider, like a difference essentially of 900,000 between low end and high end because of the new model inputs? Is it the fact that our per student costs, for example, are $2,000 higher now? Like, is that the main reason for that? Or what are the other drivers? Because the spread before is only 500,000. It's barely doubled now.
Yes, yes. Yeah. And, and the, and so Economic Development Staff has outlined on line 68 through line 116, all the factors that changed, that reflected that. And I would say the, the factor on the, the student ratio is, is one of the, the bigger ones in that. And so it's all detailed here in terms of the model inputs and the, the changes to that. So.
I don't, so, because I read the staff report. I mean, my understanding is that ratios actually came in where we expected for the latest projects. And so it actually doesn't change the model that much because of 301 West Broad and Tanner Hill, everything came in as we expected. But it's just hard for us to, I know that there's always a low end and high end of fiscal analysis and it's never our perfect science, but having a spread of 900,000 is really hard to say what we're going to get at this project, right? And I'm trying to understand why the spread is so much bigger now in the latest run.
Yeah. I think the, the Economic Development Staff were here, they'd be able to explain it in more detail. I didn't anticipate in the run, but we have talked about it basically and, you know, basically the sensitivity analysis where they talked about a 0.33 rate being used for the pupils and a factor of 50% also, you know, being used, which is different than some of the other runs. I think that's, accounts for most of the.
Why don't we just get an answer by next, by the 11th?
My understanding is that it accounts for pretty much all of the range.
Let's just get an answer.
Is the pupil yield scenario, everything else seem to be the same?
Yeah. I mean, it's, 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 it's different in a significant way.
We can certainly confirm that for Monday. Additionally, the, the updated information from the developers come in. And so for your Monday meeting, you will have the updated model run. This here before you is not with all of the new inputs from the developers. So that wasn't available by the time we did the packet. So you'll have that updated information too. But I would concur with what was said, is the pupil ranges, or the sensitivity analysis with that 50%, and then the increase to the school cost has spread your range. But we'll be able to give you an updated fiscal impact regardless of the range spread, but you'll know what a truer number is based on the updated information.
And I'll just reiterate since Wyatt's not here, but what we had shared with Wyatt is when we do the fourth model run of this, I'd only, speaking for myself, only want to see numbers in there if the developer has committed to it in the VCs. Because I know they're probably lobbying to actually get their numbers higher based on saying, hey, we're going to put in more restaurant or, you know, whatever they think the value is going to be. But unless it's in the VCs, I would not want to see new input in those model runs.
And the, the, the model's going to be updated. We received some, the developers providing some additional information on theater and restaurant uses and their expected revenue streams. And, and we're going to run the model based on our standard inputs for, you know, I have two restaurant categories and so forth. And so the, the change in the model is going to be incremental in terms of what you're seeing now. So the number's not going to change a lot. The only thing that would change that is if we changed the sensitivity analysis on the pupil factor. And at this point, I guess we're going to look at that. But at this point, in absence of any change to that, it would just be an incremental change reflecting maybe some of the new numbers. We have the standard inputs and we're going to run the model as such. The developer's always welcome to make their case on what their studies are showing and so forth. But, and we're also consider that whether it's in the VCs or not as a, as a, you know, something that, that we, we look for as well. So that's something that, you know, we're not going to consider things that are not committed to.
Gary, you guys, a question about the assumptions that you guys made related to the age restricted. So it looked like the information you got from the assessor's office was 300,000, $308,000 per unit assessed by you for the 72 age restricted. And I was going back and looking at assessment records in 301 West Broad, which has similar unit mix in terms of one and two bedroom, was assessed this year, same as it was last year, at $274,000 per unit? And I'm just wondering why we're coming up with a 12 and 1/2% increase? I mean, it just seems to me like that'd be, that'd be fairly comparable in terms of how we're going to apply that. Maybe it's a rent per square foot. I don't know. Maybe they're much nicer, the age restricted units, maybe not. But some clarity on that would be good.
Okay.
All right. What else do we have? Question was?
And just, I mean, just to follow up on what I was going through the table. So as you see on line 5960, the percent reduction in revenues is approximately 22 to 24%. So, you know, after you look at all the numbers, you can just say, okay, it's about a 22 to 24% reduction. So.
All right. Thank you for that. We move on to our colleague, our esteemed colleague. Did you have some? I'm sorry. Did one of you all have a question?
I'm just, is the, is the per acre comparison in here?
The, let's see. It was listed, let's see.
Yeah. Last time I had asked if we could see that, where it fits in the chart compared to other projects that we've approved.
Yeah. No, you, you'd asked for that.
That's really important, because that's really what we're looking at, is how does this compare to others?
Yeah. There was a, a draft of that table. And so we'll make sure you get that. So in looking at the, let's see, annual per acre, it's about 189 to 407 range.
You got, say that again, so I can.
Net annual revenue per acre. The, the, the projected range is 189 to 407. Was it about a 238,000 midpoint?
We can include that in the staff report for Monday.
Can we have that before Monday, though?
Okay.
Also, if you could address the crosswalk issue that some of the neighbors have brought up, and make sure that's addressed on Monday. Some analysis of what's going on and what staff's position, the developer's position are relating to that.
It also seems to me that, excuse me, that you're going to complete some inputs on the commercial revenue. I note that here. And considering the, the differences between what was estimated and what the actual is with regard to students using your, using our baseline buildings, if you could provide the additional detail on the individual increases in those buildings, the Reed, Pearson, 301 West Broad, Lincoln. Seems like the assertions they made that applying the 0.33 pupil ratio, difference between 43 and 106 pupils, I'd like to get back to see your foundational assumptions for those based on the actual goals.
Okay. It's also my understanding that they were going to provide updated VCs prior to Monday's meeting.
We had, we haven't received any. We, we had asked that, that they provide updated VCs on anything they, they intend on changing at this point. Yep.
Why don't you reconvey that to them and tell them that may influence some folks' opinion on whether they should proceed at this point. Mr. Duncan?
One other question. We talked about this earlier, the public engagement and information component of this. I, I see, I was out of town, but I see that while I was out of town, a number of people have written in with their comments, which have been provided to us by the clerk. But it'd be helpful to have all that bundled together for next Monday's meeting. And also, I think I understood that there is some list of people who've previously commented on this project, who, you know, should be informed that council's going to consider this action, so that they'll have an opportunity to either attend or communicate with us in some other way on Monday.
All right. Before we move on to Mr. Smart, we have an urgent update on the Capitals game. I think it's circulating around. 3-0 in caps so far. So good, good for them. Good for everybody. Now let's move on to, that's right, that'd be good. Tree lights turn red. That's what Letty says, and I think it's a great idea. So we're all caps. But anyway, let's move on to Mr. Smart. Thank you for coming out this evening. The analysis you've done on this project and in past projects are greatly appreciated, and we look forward to what you have to say about this.
Love the segue. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm Eric Smart with Bowlin Smart Associates. And many of you know that I have been working on this particular project, trying to assist the city since 2015. Over the period of that time, I've been under a confidentiality agreement between the city, or at least the city agreed with, and the applicant, and have renewed numerous documents, including current documents. And I'm here today to answer two specific questions, which I was asked, as well as any other questions that I may be equipped to, to help you with. The two questions are, the first one was, is the movie theater lease for real? Some, some, I think we're authorized to look at it at the city. I have looked at the lease. It's, it was presented as executed lease between the landlord and the theater operator. It was complete and it had the usual conditions, so I could say that, including provisions to ensure that the property as a movie operation continues to, well, opens and continues to operate. And those provisions are of course key, not only to the city, but to the success of this project, which is dependent on, on attracting other users associated with the, securing the lease for the movie theater. The second question that I was asked was, is the amusement tax abatement, which was agreed to, as I could say, as sort of part of the, the VCs a while back, are those key or are those essential to proceeding with the development as it's currently cast? And first to order is, well, yes is the answer for two reasons. The first reason is that the, it facilitates the underwriting and construction of the project. I think you guys know what, what constitutes that tax abatement. And secondly, it was, it was pivotal in, in attracting or incentivizing the operator to, to pre-lease and be able to be part of the project. And I believe I could extend that to say that's why it's now finally before you again on the part of the applicant. I can't speak for them explicitly on that, but this project couldn't go forward without both the lease and the elements that are represented by the tax payment. And I base my comments on extensive documents that I've looked at, which I take to be true. And I have, have enough experience to, to flag whether I think of it or not. So I give credibility to the cooperation of the applicant over the years in terms of that documentation. And I'm happy to answer whatever questions you may have relative to the two questions I had just described, as well as whatever else I might be able to assist with.
All right. Well, thank you for your analysis and your conclusions. Let's see if there are any questions or comments on what you just presented. Anyone have anything at the present? Ms. Hardy?
Thanks for joining us, Mr. Smart. Two things. I think from the presentation by the developers a while back, they had mentioned that the theater tax, instead of going towards the developers, were now directly going to the theater. Have you seen documentation kind of confirming that? And I guess how much of their financials can you disclose in terms of that arrangement?
I can say that, yes, I have, I can confirm that what you're saying is represented in the documentation.
So that's what they needed to do in order to bring them here, essentially?
Yes. I, the word I would use, to induce an operator. Yes.
And the second is, I think, we talked about it maybe in the EDC meeting now at this point, maybe nine months ago now. We talked about the switch from hotel to age-restricted housing. What are your thoughts on kind of market conditions for that? Other examples of successful kind of age-restricted housing? How do they perform in these types of developments? I think one of the overarching concerns we've had, and I think we've heard from the community, is does age-restricted housing depress kind of the type of retail and the type of environment we want to create in this development compared to, say, a hotel?
Yes. I can answer the comparison with the hotel and the age-restricted, but should I confine it to the age-restricted in terms of?
Or be able to do the comparison.
Much to both, sure.
Okay. The, the, the hotel as a contribution was an added profile. I mean, it, it intrinsically kind of companioned with. I mean, it intrinsically kind of companioned with the retail plan for the project. And that was consistent. Certainly, it was something that the applicant hoped to be able to achieve, but they weren't able to achieve that. So the reason I start with the hotel is that they were unable to attract the hotel. And there was other reasons why the applicant would have preferred to have the hotel as well, being able to finance the hotel through a hotel developer, for example. And the time it took, the delay it took place. So what I'm saying in this is the hotel would have been preferable, from in my view or evaluation, preferable to the age restricted, at least from two years ago and as the time passed. But not being successful in attracting the hotel, it couldn't proceed without some other use for that in a single-phase development. And the age restricted presented itself as an alternative from the city's perspective, or which you're speaking of, does the age restricted, how does it contribute to the vitality of the project? Notwithstanding what I just said concerning the profile that a hotel would bring in the initial lease up. The age restricted, if I understand, it's proposed. This is a fairly affluent demographic that would be attracted here. And one could make a case, and I've had some discussion with the economic development folks regarding the fiscal impact. It's conceptual that age restricted people could contribute on a somewhat comparable basis as to hotel customers, to the retail uses of the property, the mix of uses, the synergies. And that's predicated on that these are permanent residents that are not going off everywhere else in the city while they're visiting. And they have people that visit them as well. So I haven't got any particular modeling to suggest that the economic impact associated with the retail sales, for example, are superior or that much worse associated with age restricted. But I could explore with you further that I don't think that there's necessarily an automatic large deduct associated going from a hotel use to an age restricted use of the site that's of the sort that's being proposed.
Thank you.
Question related to the theater. Is the abatement, I guess I should say, is the theater tax being used to offset the rent that's being charged back to the theater? Meaning, is it a reduced rent compared to market?
It's an appropriate question. I mean, I know you know what you're speaking to, but it's a good question. What we did, what I did do was look at the, over the period of time that we've been involved with this, what was the rent structure that was part of the pro forma before some of this abatement would have applied to the operator? And the rent is very close to what it was in the initial proposal. Before, the operator was offered the portion of the tax abatement. So if I could go to, I think, what the question was, it's not as if the rent's gone up in capturing, it's just offsetting the cost to the operator.
The question I'm getting to really comes down to, it really focuses on the fiscal impact. Right, because the previous comment I'd made about the West End site. If you've got to reduce rent on the theater, we're effectively achieving a lower assessed value on that theater component. And I want to make sure that that's been captured in.
No, okay, I'm sorry, I may perhaps have misanswered to, I thought maybe you're going with it. I would describe the rent on the theater as a market rent.
All right, Mr. Duncan.
Just one, this is a dangerous line of inquiry because I don't know the answer. And you're never supposed to ask a question like that, but still, I'm compelled. Is it possible to compare the VC package of this project? Transportation improvements, other offers have been put upon the table by the applicant, two projects that have been done recently in the city? And draw any conclusions? Is this comparable to other projects that you're familiar with? Is it less rich? Is it more rich? Any impressions if that's within the scope of your, you know, inquiry?
I can't speak matrix style to project to project. But what I can say, based on this particular project, is that I think it's fair to say it's unique. It's an overused word. But the inclusion of a major movie theater that you don't have and is not proximate within the greater Falls Church area distinguishes this significantly from the other projects which I'm familiar with. I think I can say that safely.
I think our staff are probably better able to answer that question than Mr. Smart, with all due respect.
I've got a follow-on question. The theater piece just continues to bug me. The Borough, Ed Tyson's just announced a new Icon Theater. Crazy rent that was announced that they're achieving. Has that changed any of our thinking? Because this is a bit of a curated theater feel. We've got Angelic at Maryfield, you've got the Tyson's Behemoth, and now we've got Icon. Those far enough away to where it's not impacting our concern about drawing. Based on the numbers that we have, on the estimates that we use in our fiscal impact, we're expecting for every single one of those seats in that theater to be used once a day, based on all the analysis. I don't know if that's accurate, if that's going to change. Part of the issue that I have with this, and I mentioned it last time, is that we've created a theater tax in order to incentivize a theater to open here. And if the market changes, I'm concerned about the viability of that theater because if theaters ultimately don't work out, it is very difficult to repurpose those. And I don't want to end up with a black box that sits there where we collect no assessed value off of it, completely kills the site. And that's a major concern that I have to get comfortable. I mean, the fiscal impact is a fiscal impact. We'll make a decision as to whether that's good or not. But I want to make sure that that theater can survive. And there's a couple of follow-on questions since you've reviewed the lease. Are there significant enough lease terminate from provisions to compel this operator to remain intact? And do we have provisions in there in terms of maintaining the quality of the services provided? So if they run into an issue where they're not able to generate the viewership that they want and we're not getting the 300,000 guests, you know, spending $15 per person at the theater, that they'll continue to operate that theater so it doesn't become a blight to the city? And it's not that I want to, I typically feel like I'm one of the most optimistic people up here. But it just, whenever I think of, I got to pass a tax to have a specific business interest surviving a development, it just raises concerns and questions that I want to ask to make sure that we're not developing something. And it sounds great and the kids want it. There was a lot of support that came through in emails about, my kids are going to love to go to that. Trust me, I'll love to go to that theater. It's a great feel-good aspect that brings a very interesting and compelling component to this city, no doubt. But I don't want to, I don't want to make a short-sighted decision at the expense of what could potentially be a long-term problem.
Carol? I think to the extent we need to discuss further the terms of the lease, we need to do that in closed session. Mr. Smart reviewed it under a strict confidentiality agreement. And I think he's getting concerned as we go further. So I think we can do that. We have the, if needed, closed session for that purpose.
We are prepared, if council wants to, to do that closed session this evening.
Could answer one question, though, if I may, on the comparison of the Icon Theater at the Borough. Is that, and we're involved with theaters of that nature that are frankly, you know, happening in a lot of places. It's the model now. And what I would comment on it is that the, I believe that because it's a market rent and because we don't have to get into the nature of what of the security is associated with operating it, it should be in a position for a good many years to still perform in the fashion of providing some fiscal impact. So it's not the same as the Borough, which is in a different marketplace. And I think you appreciate that. But it's not as if that if, even if some issues arise in this case, that there all of a sudden would be no fiscal benefit incurred to the city. And we can get to some details if you wish.
All right, is there any other questions or comments for Mr. Fuller or Mr. Smart? If not, we do have a lot more to go tonight. And we have a closed session that will begin now if there are no more questions for Mr. Bowlin or Mr. Smart.
And Mayor, before you go into closed session, I need to get Mr. Snyder on the phone. And if you all elect to allow him to do electronic participation, you have the memo before you.
All right, so for the folks in the audience, we are intending to go into closed session now, which we appreciate you coming out. We will be discussing a lot of these matters at a public hearing next Monday. And you'll have an opportunity to speak. It'll be a true public hearing at that time. So thank you for coming out. We welcome your emails, your phone calls, your meetings to discuss these matters further. But thank you again for coming out.
So first, in open session, you need to approve the motion to allow Mr. Snyder to participate remotely.
Not yet.
And... Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and see if someone wants to make that.
Mayor, I move that the council approve electronic participation with Mr. Snyder today's work session for personal reasons pursuant to the policy of participation in meetings through electronic means as adopted by Council Resolution 2015-26.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder, I guess, doesn't vote on this. Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mr. Tartar, yes. All right, Dave, are you there? All right, is Mr. Snyder available yet?
Not yet.
So I'll ask the city attorney, does he need to put a space in his vote?
I think you could, I think you can go forward without him since you have six people.
Yeah. All right, so upon a motion made by council member...
Connolly.
Executed by council member...
Hardy.
And passed by a voice vote of city council. City council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A29, Discussion of the Award of a Public Contract Involving the Expenditure of Public Funds, Specifically Evaluation of Proposals Submitted in Response to RFP 0501-18 George Mason High School, West Falls Church Economic Development. Councilmember Connolly.
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy? Councilmember Lipton House?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder still asleep? Okay. Councilmember Z?
Yes.
Councilmember Tartar, yes. All right, so why don't we take a five-minute break and let them take down the cameras and the microphones?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to also have a closed session on the theater terms? Or do we want to?
I tell you, I'm not sure we need to.
I just want to be sure you did the motion now if you need to.
Maybe you guys could just connect then in our five-minute break. Do you want to try that?
Okay.
All right, so let's go ahead, just go on with the evaluation if we can, and take a five-minute break. Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lipton House?
Yes.
Snyder? Z?
Yes.
Tartar, yes. All right. So we are at a closed session. Is there any other business to discuss tonight, schedule, requests? Councilmember Connolly, go for it.
Is anyone planning to go to the I-66 meeting tomorrow night at Yorktown High School on City Council?
Yes, I'm your signed representative.
Thank you.
All right.
And prior to the meeting, I sent you all the updates. So you have the slideshow and the website link.
Okay. The second thing is that there is a beautiful Art in the Park exhibit that Mark Grabash opened in Howard Herman Park. And I just want to suggest everyone go check it out.
All right, what else is up for agenda tonight or discussion? Anything else? Nothing else? All right, let's do it. Thank you all. Good day.